We'll go ahead and call the workshop to order. I think we'll forego the formalities for now and just get right to it. Edward, are you, are we live or, okay, good, okay, thanks.
I think Edward's going to kind of go through where we're at and then...
So Mayor, you're going to forego the invocation and the pledge?
Yeah, just because it's workshop, yeah, we'll just go, yeah.
All right. So for the viewers as well, the citizens and the audience that's viewing. So this is the workshop that we scheduled after we received the, when we got the, when we had the Duke Energy Settlement Agreement. We, the council had decided they would set a workshop. So I want to go through the few slides, I have a few slides, I don't have a big presentation, but I have a few slides. And then we can have discussion and questions and things of that nature at the end. Again, if there's something in the middle of the presentation that you need to stop me, that's fine, too. So as you recall, on June 20th, Duke Energy had an agreement, we approved the agreement on June 20th. The council approved the agreement on June 20th in the amount of just a little over $2.9 million. Those funds are in our bank account, have been received as of February 1st. So we do have the funding, it's currently in our, in our account. This is a list, if you recall back on that agreement, and none of these were approved in that agreement. This was just the list that was in that agreement for discussion purposes, to kind of give you an idea of some of the, of places that, that staff and things we've been hearing from people in the community. A list of some significant items. One of the, some significant items that you see in here, too, are also items that were at budget, at our budget hearing, that were not included in our budget for '21. Due to lack of funding or whatever the circumstances may be. And there's some slides in here that I'll go through on those as well. But you can see that this, this list included the payoff of a couple loans, and we'll go through that. There's a slide to go through, we'll go through that as well. So I kind of show you the, the cost of those loans, where they are. An amphitheater bathroom, talked about a storage unit at Fran Carlton. Fire engine 11 needed replacement, as you recall, from your budget. Welcome signs, that was part of the list. Drainage, several of our lakes, we've got some issues with, as you know, Border Lake is a big one, where we've had some drainage and flooding issues. Resource Center, as you know, there was some discussion about that at our, at one of the council meetings. Birding Park improvements, that's an item that we still have that, that is on our, is on some of our budget lists and our future list. And then the Conley property, there was, you know, an item for, to kind of look at design and things of that nature for the Conley, Conley property. So there's about 3.7, a little more than 3.7 million on this list. Again, this list was nothing, we didn't, this list was not approved, not adopted, it was just some of the ideas. Debt service, so if you look through, I went through all of the debt service, if you look through the debt service that we have outstanding. We have two notes, two revenue notes, that have relatively high interest rates for this, the times that we're in today. The Recreation Improvement Revenue Note, which matures in '22, so there, it has an interest rate of about 3.9. This loan was the improvements that were made to the Northwest. This was a $7 million loan, over 15 years, but this loan was the loan that made all the improvements to the Northwest Recreation Complex. So you can see there's a principal balance, or a principal amount of $610,000 that would be due in fiscal year '22. And there would be interest associated with that of almost $24,000. The next one that you have is a, you'll recall, in 2018, we did a loan for the tower truck, a fire truck, and ambulance. And we did about 18 police cars at that time, or police vehicles. And that note matures in '25, it has an interest rate of 2.9. And the balance owed on that is a little over, or a little under $1.2 million, with interest of about $73,000. The fiscal year '22, this is just a number so you can kind of have an idea what, what this is costing each year. The debt service in next year's budget would be almost $361,000, is what the debt service would be in your, in your FY '22 budget for this loan. The current interest rate that we're earning in our bank, in our bank account and our investments is 0.3%. I wanted you to have that number so you kind of know, you know, what we're earning. And I will tell you that you can beat up the banks all day long, based on our, our investment policy. You know, we have to keep secure liquidity, safety are big issues for us. And so 0.3% is kind of where we are in our earnings. And that, I've checked with our neighbors and stuff, and some of that, most of them are in that same area. So, so I wanted you to have this information. There are a few more pieces of debt listed, several of them come off the books next year, in '22. There's some smaller pieces of debt, and then there are the other ones, their interest rates are below 2%. So these are the only two pieces of debt in your general fund that have interest rates of higher than 2%. So these slides here came from the final budget hearing presentation that we did in September, when we adopted our FY '21 budget. Some of the things that were not included in our budget were Fire Station 6. And as you know, we, we've tried a couple times with the legislature to get some funding, some appropriation from the state. We're trying again this year, so that...
And it's been, it's, it's in both the House and the Senate, so, you know, which was, that in the last two years has just been line item vetoed by the governor, but it's, it is there.
So, so we'll, you know, we'll try, you know, with that appropriation again, and hopefully we'll have some good luck with that one. Keep in mind, you do have impact fee monies, that in your fire impact fee, also will be part of the matching. Should we get some additional appropriation, if we need to have match of appropriation? Or that's where the funding will come for the Fire Station Number 6, Fire Station 6. If you recall, the fire chief talked about adding a fire district chief. In his plan, he wanted to add, we did not add that in FY '21. I will tell you that, I've spoken with him this week, there's a grant opportunity where we may be able to add these fire. He wants to, he has a little different plan, he wants to, I think, add about, I think he wants to add three fire district chiefs. And he has a plan for that. And he will, we're going to apply for a grant, we'll be bringing you that, bringing that forward as soon as it comes available. But there's some funding to allow for those positions to be, to be, that he can apply for, for those, in the fire department. Police officers, that was another one, as you know, in our FY '21, that we weren't able to fund all of the, the wants for police department, when it comes to police officers. But if you recall, at the time, we were applying, we wanted to apply for the cops grant. The chief is working through that, we continue to monitor it every day. They say that the grant is coming out very soon, so we plan to apply for that grant. So I just wanted you to let you know that we said we were doing those, and we are continuing to do those. So just to let you know, we are going to apply for the cops grant.
And the cops grant's 100% for the first year, correct?
I think, yeah, Mayor, it's, I don't know, but it's pretty close to that, I think, but it gradually, it declines gradually. I think after year three, you become, it becomes full. But, but we did that some time back, about five years ago, we did that and added five.
Yeah, we added five, and then after three years...
We, we take the full, the full bill.
We take the full responsibility for...
Correct.
And how many is this grant that they're applying for, how many?
Chief and I talked about it, he talked about maybe trying to apply for 10. So he's going to try to apply for 10. A lot of it depends on the monies that are available and who else applies, but he's going to try to apply for 10 instead of five this time. So, 10 positions.
And that's what they allow with the grant, up to 10?
I think that's what, he and I had a discussion about that, and I, and we talked about doing five again. But he's going to do whatever, he wants to do up to 10, if they'll let us do that, that amount. So yes, he says that he thinks we can get that amount, so. So whatever that number, he'll, we'll bring you that grant as well, you'll see that grant whenever we apply for it as well. The next item we had was the audio/video for the city council chambers. I will tell you that Rob and his crew, they're very efficient with their budget. So some of their dollars, they didn't have to spend last year for some items, so that is, they have been able to fund that item with their savings from their current budget. So that item is currently funded.
Let me ask you, with the video and audio, is that going to be moved from that location, this, this board?
I think that's in the plans, is that, is it to move this screen, Rob, it's to go over there, I think, wasn't it? Yeah, so I think that his plans were...
And that's part of it? Yeah. Okay, because it's, from there, when you sit in the chamber, that's very hard to see.
Right, yeah, I think, I think their plan was to put it on that, so that the public can see.
Okay.
Just one question on that, too, if it's up there, whenever anybody is using the pointer, we won't be able to see that, and that won't show up on here, so how do we saw that?
Is it interactive, smart board or touchboard up on the podium? That you can actually, if you deny like the software, you'll actually see what's...
So we can see it.
Yeah.
So the next item are computer servers. Again, this is an item that Rob was able to fund in his budget from last year. So I checked with him this afternoon, and he says he's good with servers, that he's had, the things that he needs. So that item is, has been taken care of. Additional fields for Northwest Recreation Facility, this is a big number, as you know. To additional fields are, you know, Brian Foreman, as he presented in his capital plan or whatever, was a big number. There, we've had some talks with some, some people, that there may be something that we can bring forward. We may bring something in the near future on this item, to maybe partnership with somebody on, on helping with some of these fields, so, and that'll come...
I remember him saying he had a budget already, he had a substantial budget.
He has a CIP budget, and these items were in his, like, I think, third and fourth year out. Some of these, because these, these, this ticket item is, is...
Millions.
Millions, two to, two to $4 million to add all these additional fields, ball fields and everything. So that's why we've been trying to work to see if we can't partner and come up with a way where we can fund this with a partner, to be able to get those fields. But this was in his CIP plan, this was not in the current budget, this is a forecasted in his five-year plan.
Okay, this is his five-year plan?
Yes.
Does he have that available?
It's in your budget, in the budget book, Commissioner.
It's in the budget book?
Yeah, in the back of the budget book is your five-year capital, and you'll see those line items that he has. Recreation had quite a substantial, some big items at the, in the last part of their plan.
And one of the things we, we want to do, as soon as we kind of feel a little more comfortable, you know, with large crowds, is we want to have the community out at the Northwest. And what we're going to do is blow up a map, have Mike Suver do us a map of the Northwest. And then give individual, you know, members of the public pins to put where they want things. Let's say you want a dog park, well, I want the dog park here. Somebody else says, well, I want pickleball courts, I want them here. So we're going to let them kind of give us what their thoughts about improvements at Northwest. And then we want to take it back and have somebody that actually designs those kind of complexes and say, okay, now what, you know, here's, here's what the, what the public wants. Now, how, how can we make this all work with the property we've got and what, what they, what their vision is? So that's, we'd like to, you know, we were talking April or May, we'd like to be able to get people out there when it's, before it gets too hot. And let them, give them individual, you know, little pins, and what the pin, you know, equates to a dog park, or pickleball courts, or whatever they think they'd like, and where they want to put it. So that you might have 40 pins right here that all for dog park, well, that seemed to be the consensus from the public.
So, I mean, one of the things I'd like to see at the Northwest Park is sort of an area that is not being used by sports. But that would allow parents to come and families to come and picnic, and just kind of have access to the park. Because on the weekends, it's totally packed with sports, and the parking lots are packed. And there's really no place in the, on the weekends that a family can just come and kind of just sit around and have a picnic or some, other than that park that's all the way at the end behind Wolf Lake.
Okay.
And, and the problem there is the bathrooms.
Right.
And you literally have to get in your car and drive three parking lots to get to the bathrooms.
Right, so I think, like Mayor was saying, I think that's a good idea, that'll allow the public to, to be able to come and say, you know, that they want to see these, we need more picnic areas, we need more bathrooms. And that kind of leads to the next item, Commissioner, that we've been hearing a lot, is that people at the amphitheater are like, the bathroom's way up on the hill. They have to walk all the way up to the hill, we don't have any bathroom facilities actually around the amphitheater. And so one of the items that, that was in our capital budget was to build a ba, a bathroom down on the west side of the amphitheater. You got one kind of up on the east side, but it's way up high. Kind of build one down, one down there that could have a concession and a, and a bigger bath, a little bigger, so that we could have, you know, restroom facility that's at the amphitheater, so that everybody doesn't have to, to go up the hill. So, because we've been hearing that a lot, that people, you know, would like to have a bathroom facility closer to the amphitheater. Again, to your point, maybe there's somewhere else we need bathroom facilities in some other areas that, that, that had been an issue. As you know, the last two years, each year we funded to do the concession and a bathroom in the dugouts. And the two fields that are, that have been funded and are being constructed. So that will put bathrooms closer to, that was another issue we had, was that there weren't enough bathroom, the bathrooms weren't close enough to the ball field. People had to go to the bathroom up by the, the...
By the hill there.
Yes, by the hill, or they had to go down to the office, or they had to go up the other side to the one by the Little League.
Right.
So that was the amphitheater bathroom item. Storage building for recreation and the cemetery, as you know, those buildings that are next to Fran Carlton, they have, they're kind of on their last, they're at their, that they're in, they're done. So one of the items that was in our budget, our future budget, was to build a storage building there that we could store our, as you know, the McBride House that sits also behind Fran Carlton. We've got storage in there, but the building is, is falling apart. This storage building was, was in our plans to be able to store the recreation, be able to have them to store. The cemetery doesn't have any storage, this would allow them to have storage. And then provide the storage for anybody in our, you know, some of our partners and things that we have that have, that things that need to be stored or what are kept out of the weather. This would give us that, that area. So, because like I said, the McBride House is just, it's, it's, we've stored some stuff in there, but it's not in very good shape. So that, this would, would help with that need. The next item is a bigger item, a new building for Fleet and the Streets Division. This item was estimated over $1 million. Jeff has come, since Jeff's come on, they put a plan together, as you know, we moved Streets Division from 8th and Highland, because of the condition of that, that area, which is the area, the parcel that we have up for sale currently. But we've moved our, our staff from there down to Public Works, the Streets and Grounds people, the Grounds has moved to Recreation, and the Streets have moved down to Public Works. Well, Jeff is putting a plan together of some of the buildings and things that they need to, for Fleet's expansion, as you've heard, they need some, some expansion. And then some Streets, our Streets folks, where they do our signs and stuff, they need some facility as well. Currently, by moving down there, they, they're, they're in building, they have buildings, but they need storage buildings, they need things of that nature. And so this is just getting off the ground, because Jeff has come in and wanted to put a plan together. And some of it, we think we can actually even save some money with some of the layout and the plans that he has. So that'll come back to you, maybe at budget time, you'll probably see that. But I wanted to let, that was one of our items that we weren't able to fund last year, that's also on the list. Fiber replacement, City Hall and Public Services Fiber Replacement, as you know, that was a request from the IT Department. The fibers are all working, things are good, things are working, but as Rob told you, that, you know, it's older, they don't know where some of it's at. But they do know there's, where they're spliced, where they're put together, and places that, you know, sometimes they have to work on those. So this was an item that was not included in his budget last year, it's in his future budget, so there's funding, or there's, it's in the budget for 2022, as a request for 2022. But that's also an item, and I think that was around $50,000 or $60,000, I think, that, that Rob had mentioned. But he also mentioned that we may be able to get some of our Streets crew and his staff to be able to install it. So if, if, if our staff has, you know, some time to do that, that could provide some savings. Street resurfacing, you've heard it every year, there's never enough money for street resurfacing. But we are currently doing the, the, Jeff and his crew have, getting underway with the street assessment. So at budget time, you will have that report, so that you can see, all the streets will be assessed, conditions, you'll be able to see that report when you build your budget for the next year. And then the last one, which is a really big one, is Border Lake Flooding. We all know that flooding has been an issue for us, so that was, that was a big ticket item as well. Again, that's an item that we have asked for appropriation. And then we, that's a, I think that's a regional kind of a partnership program, but that'll require some funding from us and hopefully from our partners and, and the legislature's some help.
Yeah, Orange County, they've got a contract with Orange, they sent us over something to take a look at, that will be a 50/50 partner in whatever we need to do at the Border Lake, Lake Page area. So we'd like to get Seminole County involved, as well as DOT, but, you know, for right now, at least, we were, it looks like we're going to be 50% partners in the, in the cost share on, on the Border Lake fix.
Yeah, that's what I understand, that the county is willing to, I think, pay for it upfront, all of it, and then come back, and we pay them back? Something to that effect.
Anyway, we'll, we'll end up being a 50/50 partner if we don't get some other help from either Seminole County or DOT.
So that's all that I have from a PowerPoint standpoint, and from, from a list of items. I wanted to make sure that you had, when I looked, when, from a staff standpoint, looked at the items that would affect us or set us up good for our upcoming budget. I think it's very important that we continue to watch. I know we're still, you know, more than six months out in the fiscal year, but with the sales tax number that we're watching each month, as you see, you know, we were down about half a million dollars in that number. I think, you know, it's critical to also be looking forward, I think it's important that we look forward as well. But these are the items that, that we, you know, weren't able to fund in our budget, some other items that we've heard from the community, some things that, that, that people have talked about. And so I wanted you to have that list. The debt service, I think it's critical, I think you can see just those two pieces of debt service, and I could free up as much as almost a million dollars in your budget next year. So I think it's, you know, I think it's kind of important to look at, at all of the pieces, so I wanted to make sure you had all the pieces before you. So in, in staffs here, we can answer questions, if there's any questions and further discussions.
Commissioner Banksen?
Well, for me, one of the first things that I'm looking at is these that we carry a note on with a higher interest in what really is typically out there right now. If we knock those out, we create $97,000 by doing so, which, you know, if we can, basically knock those two out, the interest savings on that is creating $97,000 that we won't take out of the budget in the future.
Correct, correct, from interest.
Right, so I'm, I kind of always lean that way, if we can knock those things out, unless they were a low interest rate, that it was low money. But that's just one thought that I had there, obviously looking to try and catch our police department up. Been writing, and let me go through my notes here. Just go ahead and let me come back.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
What I basically did was, I took the wishlist that you gave us last time we presented the monies, and then I took the list that we're looking at here today, that we excluded from the budget last year. And I sort of went through and looked at things that I felt that would make the biggest impact, both for the city and for our residents. And so what I was looking at was paying off the $1 million debt for the power truck and the police cars. Funding the amphitheater bathrooms and concessions. The Fran Carlton Storage Buildings. Replace the fire engine at the $300,000. The $250,000 for the drainage for Border Lake and Lake Hamburg and Lake Page. The $150,000 for the Resource Center. $150,000 for the Birding Park, and $50,000 for the Conley property. And if I added that correctly, that came to $2,885,000. And subtract that from the 2.9 million, that leaves about $50,000. And then that would allow us to fund the fiber replacement for City Hall.
Mayor, I want to say, Commissioner, on the fire truck, the $300,000, I want to make sure this is clear, that's only half of the truck. So that, so that's basically putting a deposit down towards it, and then, because it'll be, it'll take a year to build it. So in your budget, instead of building in $600,000 next year, you only have to build in $300,000 for the difference. I want to make that clear, that the truck is $600,000, not $300,000.
Okay, all right. And so that, that's, that's my recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Becker?
Just a point of clarification on, Edward, when you wrapped up just a second ago, you said that if we paid off debt service, it would free up a million bucks in run rate? Did I hear that right, or you save 22, debt service is 360 on the paper?
Yeah, Commissioner, what I was saying there is, if you look, what I was saying is budget-wise, in your budget next year, you'd have to fund the, I'm doing the total. So you'd have to fund almost 630 there, and then you'd have to fund 360 here. So by paying those debts off now, next year in your budget, the, the million dollars, the 600 and 300, you wouldn't have to fund the debt, that's all, that's what that is.
And then the, the note that has all the stuff coming mingled, that's just all one note, right? We don't have the ability, it's not separate sub-notes that we're, we would be able to pay off individually?
Yeah, it's one note, and I, and let me tell you this, too, I should have said this earlier. Before I came, I'm very frugal, before I came, before I brought you this, we got on the phone with the banks, and we said, hey, we got loans that are 1.2, we got loans that are 1.5. Can I get a reduction, what can I do, what can we do to get a reduction in these rates? And we couldn't get the banks to move off either one of them, no matter what we did, I mean, we tried everything, and they were just like, nope, you're locked in, the rate's the rate, and it is what it is. So we tried to get these down lower than where they were, under two as well, but we couldn't.
And we also tried to take some of those leases, you know, leases, no, no-interest leases, well, you know, there's, they got an imputed, you know, rate or return on that, it's not like to give it to you for free. We tried to see, could you discount some of the leases, because we got three or four or five leases that, that we, you know, like tasers and stretchers and... and we couldn't get them to discount the, you know, the amount. It's like, why wouldn't you give us, you know, a 5% or 10% discount if we're going to pay it off instead of paying it off in three years? So, but they wouldn't budge on, on the lease agreements either.
Well, I guess the other question should have been also, I was talking about paying off the $1 million loan and I see it's not really maturing until '25, is there an early payoff penalty?
No, there is no penalty for, in that one. That loan was, the 2018 loan was, there's no prepayment penalty.
So I've, I've struggled a little bit there because, you know, obviously debt necessarily isn't a bad, a four-letter word, right, even though it is a four-letter word, as long as we're responsible in keeping that percentage low as a total,
Right.
percentage of our total expenditure as a city. But same, same token too, if you get rid of that, you do free up money that you would have spent on an annual debt service payment. My question is, you know, obviously we, we tend to gravitate towards some of these big-ticket items, you know, these bathrooms of the worlds or ball fields that are two to four million bucks. Where I want to center in on is these, this 2.9 million dollars isn't this kind of windfall that we just discovered, right? It's monies that should have been coming to us over the last two years. So we naturally have things that are still not as sexy to list on these picks up here, but, you know, roofs that leak or plumbing that's not up to snuff in our facilities or, you know, Fleet that requires maintenance, all this sort of kind of under-the-covers type of maintenance. What does that figure look like? And that's, that's where I want to concern myself first, before we even entertain some of these big-ticket items, as well as some of these fringe items that were being requested to fund.
Right, and Commissioner, to that, I will tell you that the roofs have all been funded. All of the leaking roofs are done. We, this one, as you know, on tonight's meeting, you'll, we will award this contract, hopefully, for this roof. Public Works is done, Station 3 is done, Station 2. And Joe's going to put together a report to bring you before budget time to kind of show you the condition of everything, where we've, where we've come from and where we are today, that we have, we have the annex still to do, but there's funding that's carried forward from, because it's been funded for a couple of years. So there's funding that's carried forward to do the, the annex. We did apply for a grant to do the police department, we're still waiting. They said that, that we, they really think we have a good opportunity to get it. So we're kind of waiting to see where we get, if we get funding for that, for the police department. So the plumbing issue, I've talked to Joe about that. I guess we have pretty, there's a, an issue in the fire department, in Fire Station 1, that the pipes are, the pipes are pretty old, they are old in that building. And they are doing some work on that now, but that is all funded in the current budget. So he's working now, they're working now to fix, try to fix that, that issue in the fire department now. And that's funded. So those items, I just want you to know that they are funded, so the roofs are funded and that's funded. I do want to kind of point out too, I guess, from a, from a debt service, as you know, we're getting ready to study building a new public safety complex. So I think we need to kind of also watch that, that's going to be a debt service payment. That's going to be a pretty big debt service payment that's going to come on. So I think anything we can do now, if there are some places that we can make some changes in our debt service now, it will free up that so that we can, we can borrow that money to build the, the public safety complex.
Yeah, yeah, because I just, my, my theory is that there's still a lot of stuff left to be desired on some of our facilities and stuff like that. And even, even the infrastructure too, right? It's not just the road resurface, it's some road restriping items, you know. I've, I've talked about Lester Road, I mean, some of that stuff is just absolutely disappeared. Street lighting, I had a resident talk about Sandpiper recently, got an email about that. You know, had an email exchange with a gentleman up in Oak Ridge talking about the pressure of the reclaimed water system going up there and they can't even use their sprinklers properly. So, you know, it's this type of, these things that kind of bubble up out of nowhere that we need dollars for. And that's where this money comes into play. It's all fixing all the stuff that we should be fixing, that's, needs to be fixed.
And, and you're, and, and some of those issues, you're right, that's what we've been trying to, to work on and trying to shore up. The reclaim issue or whatever is at your utility side, so then there's funding there. So that's an issue that can be, that will be funded from the utility side and should be.
But absent having full funding from the utility side, we could, in theory, transfer dollars from general fund to satisfy, if there's a critical need.
You could do that, it's very, very rare, because the enterprise fund should stand alone and it should, the, the rates of the enterprise fund should fund all of that without tax dollars or general fund dollars. So I'm not saying you can, I've never seen that, I've always seen it go the other way. But, but you could, you could put general fund dollars there if that's something you had to do, but.
A dollar's a dollar, though, is the point that I'm making.
Yeah, you could, you could do that there. But the utility fund is very healthy and if it has an issue, it should, it needs to take, take that project on from that fund.
Yeah. Because quite honestly, three or four years ago, they were taking money out of utilities and sending it over to general funds, which, you know, so some of our, we got in trouble because of that. Some of the dollars that should have been going to street resurfacing, should have been going to Public Works, was being sent over here. So we've got that pretty well, in pretty good shape. I mean, we still were waiting on the wastewater and the reclaimed and the stormwater to get, to get a balance on rates versus that. But the last thing we're going, we want to do is take money out of utilities to fund, you know, I don't call them fluff things, but parks and rec and, and, you know, police and fire. It's, they, that needs to stay down there and take, take care of our infrastructure.
Right, and that, that's the study we're doing as well. As you know, they did that, they're doing the cost allocation, the study, to actually study what should that transfer really be? And they're going to bring, you'll get all of that, it'll all come back, you'll get to see all that from the study.
Now, the useful life on the stuff that's wrapped in the 1.2 million dollar note, do we have a general sense of the horizon of that? So how much of the police vehicles or the ambulance have a useful life that is longer than that fiscal year '25 payoff?
The, if you look back at the loan, the loan had the tower truck, the fire truck and the ambulance, and I think it had a seven-year life on those from the, from the note. So you can see it's a seven-year note. So I think they kind of used those, because those vehicles last a lot longer. The police vehicles in that note, if you look back at that note, when I looked, it had a three-year. Police vehicles, they usually give a three-year cycle in that note. So all of those vehicles, of course, are all wrapped up into that note. But seven years is what they have for the fire and the tower truck.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to belabor my comments here, but obviously my focus is more in line with making sure that we have all of the little things that keep on bubbling up that we always have to put money towards to fix or patch or whatever the case might be, whether that's potholes, whether it's resurfacing, street lighting, all these water issues that are, pardon the pun, bubbling up. But all that stuff before we even get into some of the, the larger investments. And then Station 6, obviously, if we don't get it from a state level, which, you know, with COVID, I, I, I find it hard to believe that they're going to fund our, our station out of, out of appropriations. I just, I, I have a tough time thinking that. So getting them out of that trailer environment into a formal brick and mortar station, you know, all these things are adding up pretty quickly.
Right, and I, and I agree with you there, I'm from Station 6, I think, you know, we've got, I think it's, we've tried, I think it's, it's worth a try to try to, you know, see what we can get. So I think you're right, after this, you know, we've tried and nothing we can do. I think, you know, we, we, we have to go, we will go to build Station 6, definitely. You do have impact fees, which is what they're for, and you do have, I'm confident that you have the impact fees. Your impact fee number is almost $2 million in that fund. So I think, you know, we have the funding to build the station, it's just a matter of if we, can, are we, can we get, you know, some help so that, that we can use those for other, other, other fire improvements?
And then the final elephant in the room, right, is Camp Weewall. I mean, that's an unknown at this point. So what that financial package looks like, that's going to be a huge impact to the conversation that we're having here.
Right.
Okay, I'm in, right?
Well, I think, I'll let her go.
Okay, you'll finish up, okay. All right, Diane?
Well, kind of, I'm going along with, I'm glad that he asked everyone else. So I, I get an idea of what the priorities are for each different, for each commissioner. But that is my concern, is that we have this windfall, but we have so many, what do they call, low-hanging fruits? And so what happens is we keep kicking the can down the road and we don't fix it, we don't do what we need to do. And here we have this list and now we're, we're kind of investing in bigger projects and we haven't really taken care of the little ones that are kind of all just adding up. Now, when we went over the legislation, you know, what, what do we have up in Tallahassee? Some of these items are in there and that was Fire Station 6. And I kind of believe that, I don't think they'll fund it, because right now with COVID and of course the, you know, budget restraints everywhere in the state of Florida, this is not a priority for them. Water seems to be a very big deal without governor and we are having a lot of flooding problems. So that's, for me, that's a priority. Border Lake and all the lakes there, because as the mayor knows, I have gotten calls for Clear Lake Estates, Border Lake, we have that shopping center there that we want to encourage businesses to come into this shopping center, but we have a very big flooding problem there and that's something that we have to address. And Northwest, I can see, because that's something that brings us a lot of revenue. So if we can invest in something that will keep bringing, you know, people to come in and want to be at the Jason Duelle and the, in the sports field, that's a, that's a good investment. At this point, you know, the debt service, you're right, if we pay up some of this debt service, that frees up the money for the next budget and we, we can then fund some of the things that we did not fund in the last budget. I just feel like the list that we have, maybe there's one or two things here that I would say, okay, let's go forward with it. But then again, as everyone knows, Camp Weewall came into our lap. And that's a big, that's a big commitment for us. So this 2.9 million would help us. If we, we have to say, what do we really want? Obviously Camp Weewall is something that's risen way to the top of the list. And, you know, we, we can't depend on the grants and certainly what I don't want is for us to be taking funds from different departments in order to meet that expense. Maybe we should hold on to some of this money, we may use it toward Camp Weewall if we decide that we're going to go forth with it.
Commissioner Banksen?
Okay, just going back, I, again, I don't want to leave almost $100,000 on the table that we would be paying to the banks, that we could be paying ourselves and use it in the future. So that's why I kind of lean towards those two bigger items. And the thought is, what would, they won't change that present interest rate, but if we went and we looked at the amphitheater, what would it, what would be the new loan on that? Could we get a lower interest rate on that? And so we're switching it from a higher one for the rec loan to something, if we want to use that money elsewhere, basically looking at a loan to get that done, so we still accomplish it, but we're shifting it over to an interest rate that makes sense. Again, as Commissioner Becker said, that's, that's good debt versus bad debt. So that might be one shift we could look at doing. I kind of agree with Commissioner Smith on a lot of these line items here and of course, recognize Pastor Shoreyes and his lovely wife that are here and gotten so many emails, I'm sure everyone has, on the recs, or the, the Resource Center. And I think that's a tremendous help to the city. So I'm excited to have that involved in there. But again, to Commissioner Velazquez's point, maybe we want to take, we might want to take some of those and hold that aside until we get a decision on how we're going to approach Weewall. And if we have those resources, then go ahead and hit it according to these priorities laid out as Commissioner Smith had laid them out.
To that end, can we, can we hear a little bit more about the Resource Center? Because again, I get a lot of emails, but I don't have a lot of meat to that bone.
Pastor, once you come up and, he's been, he's been kind of the, the leader on this whole.
I, I actually come not as pastor of First Baptist Church, I come as a resident of Apopka, who's been here now for six years. And in my role at the church, of course, I saw that, just like every city, there's a homeless community, but even beyond that, you know, right down Midland Street at the end, there's a, a community of apartments there that Spanish live in, that we, we do a tremendous amount of ministry to them because they're, they are what, what appears to be hard-working residents that are just below the poverty line and, and, and need help. And so as, as we've watched this, we found out that a lot of energy, a lot of effort has gone into trying to help a homeless community that always doesn't want to advance. They, they, as long as they can get a meal every day somewhere, they're okay, why work? And when all of our churches and all of our agencies are working independently, there are enough smart people out there that they go wherever they can go to get what they want and they're never going to get better. So our, our, our idea as this began to develop is that if we can get everybody working together out of one central location, we'll know who wants to advance and who's just going to milk the system. The more of that we know, the easier it becomes to hold people responsible. If I have, on Monday night, I'll have 50 to 75 individuals, to include families with children that'll come over to get food, get a change of clothing, when we're able to do showers, to help them get a shower so that they're at least cleaned up and respectable when they go into our businesses. And only a small percentage of them will go forward. But the problem is, I can't really identify who's going where and what they're getting from other places because we're not networked. If we have a Resource Center that allows all of us to work together, what happens is when Billy Smith comes to my church and I tell him, listen, if you want to set a clothes, you go to the Resource Center and see a caseworker and they'll evaluate, what are you doing to help Billy Smith? So that one day, you're not having to get clothes, but one day you're bringing your used clothes to the Resource Center to help the guy behind you. That's the goal. And, and when, and when all of our, we've had probably as many as 26, 27 churches that have shown an interest in this, when we all start working together and we can all direct them to the same place and a case manager can start to build files, we'll be able to help those in our community that want to be helped. Those that don't will be identified and eventually they'll drift off. Now, I, I'm not trying to push anybody away, I believe in helping anybody that wants help. But when, when, when we know who wants help and who doesn't, it becomes very easy to start to direct them in a way that's beneficial to the city as a whole and to our residents and community as a whole. Every single nursery that I drive by generally has a, you know, I, I need help signs out. We've got people that could work, but connecting them to the nurseries that need helpers, getting them in a place where they're willing to go work is hard because we don't know where they're going for right now. Again, there's a lot of them that just, they, they can get food every day and so why, why go work if somebody's going to feed me every day? This Resource Center will help bring all of this together in a, in a way that, that our city will be beneficial. Now, I, I don't need this as a church, I've got plenty to do myself. And that's why, that's why we thought if we, if we could get the Resource Center together and the, the, the city was in support of it, our businesses have already expressed that they're willing to help with it, they, they give us things all the time to try to help. So, so we've got a good business community here and when we all start working together, we can fix this. I, I, you know, it'll never go away, you're always going to have some, I mean, we, we recognize that. But I really think that we can make an impact in some lives that, that, that will just be a model. I, I, I've been to the Samaritan Resource Center over in East Orlando, I've been to the Sharing Center in Sanford, I've been down to a Place for Grace down in St. Cloud and, and, and I see what can be done. And I just think that the city of Apopka would be significant if we, if we were to have a place where there are caseworkers that can actually examine what the real needs are and then connect them to the, the resources that are out there. My church, we know that we want to still do some of the things we do now because it gives us a chance to share Christ with them. The Resource Center won't be designed for that specifically. Of course, that will be an element that we hope is there, but, but that's not that important because if somebody comes there and they know that I provide a Monday night dinner, the Resource Center can say, hey, listen, since you seem to be moving forward, you got three kids that are hungry, go to First Baptist on Monday night, they'll help you out. you got three kids that are hungry, go to First Baptist on Monday night, they'll help you out. And First Baptist then will help them with that. And uh, we just all start working together and use the resources that we have. Um, and, and that's, that's the, the concept. So I'm willing to answer any questions that you have specifically and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not up here to debate the, the, the charitable nature of that or the mission or the desired outcomes for people that are of, of, without means. Um, you know, the, some of the flaw in that, that thinking too is that with a resource center that everybody can kind of gravitate towards and like you opened up your remarks is, everybody has something that they can do, go to every day of the week and they know that. And if they're not motivated to get out of that situation, if, if they're covered, so to speak, uh, food-wise, uh, they, the motivation may not be there. The introduction of a Apopka Resource Center is not necessarily gonna make those daily services go away. They're still gonna stay there. My church does uh mannebag for homeless. They do, they work with the Hope Ministry that comes the first Tuesday of every month. Those things, I'm assuming, will stay. Um, so all of those things will still be a service that they can come to. My, my thing is I always kind of gravitate towards the dollars and cents of, of the transaction versus the cause because I don't think anybody could disagree with the cause that, that you're trying to do.
Correct.
But, you know, we've, and I'll use an example, the UCF incubator. We sunk hundreds of thousands of dollars into that. Didn't, didn't do anything that it said it was going to do. Um, we've got um, this where I, I get, there's a number represented, but I don't know what that money is for. I, I don't, you know, is that for a brick and mortar location? Is that for services? And, and to that end too is, the people that are buying into this program, what's been the seed money thus far? Or is it just, hey, city of Apopka, you are the seed? And I've got residents that come to me and say, hey, that's not our business as a city, as a government, to do that. And that's where I, I struggle and I just need to know a little bit more about what that 150 is for.
Okay, well, the 150 would be for a location to get it started, the brick and mortar to get it started. Uh, there is, there is right now, uh, I mean, the foundation has been set. There's about probably fifteen thousand dollars in the foundation that isn't being spent right now because again, we, we didn't want to start spending money that um, uh, that was being done already in, in the churches. Uh, we've not recruited for money because we don't have a place that it's actually working out of. I didn't want people sending money to First Baptist Church uh because it's not a church uh event. It's a, it's a, it's a foundation city event. So, so we were kind of stuck there. Um, we need that location to get started and we'd looked at several of them and I think there were some possibilities, but we want to work with the city. We could have very easily worked with the Masonic Lodge and, and got their annexes and, and I had some people that were willing to start uh looking at um refurbishing it and doing all of that. The problem is, the city doesn't want all of our homeless running back and forth across uh 441 uh because we've already had people killed out there in that situation and with it right there and trying to do a city center. So we're trying to be respectful not to, to do something that's gonna frustrate the city at the same time. And so, uh, so uh, two options right now. I know that there's a place on Central just south of uh Michael Gladden that, you know, could potentially be, be, be purchased. Uh, if the city purchased it and then leased it to the Next Step Foundation, that would be an opportunity. Uh, the location makes it a little bit difficult. Uh, uh, Pastor Smith knows that with it being right down there, uh, some of our volunteers are gonna struggle with going down there unless there's security and so now you got an additional expense that, that's involved. Um, we just were approached by um Debbie Turner. Uh, they've got to downsize and, and so uh their building is available. Uh, our church would love to uh, you know, have the foundation purchase that. Uh, it's in a location where there's already a lot of activity uh for them anyway and uh, it could be monitored. Uh, we're close to the fire department if there's any issues uh with uh health. We're close to the police department if there's any security issues or, uh, and, 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 and since uh, we already know a lot of this community, we can, we can uh utilize that. So that money could go to uh assisting with, 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 with purchasing that through the foundation. And I really don't think there's gonna be an issue with the funding once we can say, here's where it is, here's what's going on. And we would have to scale uh whatever services we had available uh to whatever funding was available through uh the assistance of uh, of community members. And a lot of community members want to participate, but we don't have that place for them to do that yet.
Mr. Smith?
And I just want to say that the community center, I believe, is gonna probably make one of the biggest impacts in, in our city and on our citizens. And, and not only is it about food and clothing, but even at our church, some of the individuals that come to our church for assistance need help that we're not able to provide. Some of them need mental health counseling. So by having a resource center where there's a caseworker that's trained to do this kind of work, they could have referrals as to where they're gonna send them to go for the various needs that they have. And, and our church provides services just as the First Baptist does, but by having a resource center, when they go there, then we can track where they're going, where they've been and that will, we will have, like Pastor said, a, a database that would tell us that yes, this person is really trying to help themselves and we can see that, that advancement. And then that's not jumping from church to church to church and, and taking advantage of the system. So by having one place to go where there's all this data is compiled and they can have the resources there that these individuals would need, pass the clothing and, and the food, but the mental health, uh, jobs, healthcare, all, all those kinds of things, uh, housing. Uh, i- if it's all housed in one place, then that's a resource. So then if the individuals that, that have jobs are available, have housing, then they can send all the information to the Resource Center. It's all compiled in one place. And so it just makes it easier to be able to help those citizens that need that assistance.
And Commissioner Becker, as, you know, like the mannebags being passed out, the, the idea, the Community Resource Network has already developed a software for us to be able to, 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 to put at all of the churches. And so when somebody comes for a mannebag, they could very simply put in, you know, Joe Smith and uh, what we were, what we were using were date of birth. Uh, we've got most of their dates of birth because uh, uh, we just, we would celebrate their birthdays when they would come on. Uh, and, and so most of them do that and it's an easy way to kind of just track who's doing what. And all they would have to do is they put that in there and we know that they got a mannebag at, you know, First Methodist Church or whatever uh the church was and, and, and that helps us also. And all of that is in place, it's just without a, a facility to start um coordinating the efforts and making sure we know who's on board and who isn't uh is, is the challenge. And we don't, churches want to do ministry, so we don't want to take it away from them. We want to be able to say, listen, if you work with us, if you go to your church and send them to us, let us evaluate them and then we can say, you know, when you need a bag, you can go to First Methodist Church. We don't want, or whatever that church is, we don't want to take that away from any of the churches from doing ministry because that's our opportunity to say, you know, Christ is the answer and hopefully they'll get that in their life and that'll help all of them. That's our, that's our ultimate goal.
Yeah, what I really like, as I read through, uh, you know, what you had already produced there to see all of the different resources available, what I like about it is the accountability factor. And having been a pastor for 25 years here in the city and we've dealt with different ones and heard the stories and those who've gamed the system. And this actually will save the city, save the taxpayers in the longer run because it's, it's helping people who want help.
Yep.
And rather than feeding a problem, we're really feeding people. And uh, I, I really think the organization of this, this really fits something I've longed to see, that we can all work together as all of the churches. And I think it starts moving things off of the back of government, back to the churches where it's most natural. And the fact that, uh, you know, the diligence that I know you guys have put into it. I'd be right in the middle, but because of sunshine, I went, I saw the mayor there, so pulled back. But uh, I, I think this is a tremendous, the organization that you already have and what you've already done lends itself towards accountability and that's gonna really help people in the long run, so.
We, we've got a great community of volunteers here. We've got, I mean, when we do our effort at the church, uh, often we have more people there from outside of our church than our, than, than us. Uh, the beta uh community uh at school uh comes every Monday night and, and are a part of it. So we've got our young people seeing uh the value of helping. And so once we had it in a place where, you know, they from their churches know about it, I really think that the, 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 just use the word synergy of, of, of all of us working together will be tremendous.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Well, the, the, you know, you said you do minister that small uh development right behind on Midland, which I have seen over there. Um, I have dealt with a few of the different churches and what I have found, uh, you know, Hope Community, the farm workers, City of Destiny, um, of course, the Methodist Church, the Baptist Church, is that each of you are working separately, but you are all doing the same thing. And what you're asking us is to provide you the building, to buy the building. What if all of, everyone that is do, is, is providing this service get together and buy the building? Uh, you see, I'm with the Commissioner Becker. A lot of the residents that have reached out to me and say, well, why is the city buying this building? Why aren't the churches getting together and purchasing the building? And leaving, and leaving the, the taxpayers out. He's saying, because it feels like as a government, we are now overseeing this, this service.
Well, we're, we're not. We're, we're, I mean, and, and the operating costs are gonna be way more than, this is, this is to get a building. The operating costs over the next 20 years are gonna be much higher than, than the, our $150,000 investment that we make. You know, we, we hope it'll be a break even situation that the churches, we'd like to have, you know, the, the 20 or 30 churches that have been at every month's meeting up until COVID, that they would help support this community center, that that, you know, to help keep the lights on, you know. I, I think then we'd get Advent Health to come in with the mental health counseling, with, you know, uh HIV testing, with, with, you know, shots for hepatitis.
We, and which we did.
Right. So I, I think, you know, this is, this is, you know, kind of the seed we need to get those churches. I mean, they're all kind of waiting and, and, you know, when you, when you go to these meetings, we would average 20 to 30 churches and 40 to 50 people every month. You know, they're committed to, to making this work.
And Commissioner Velazquez, uh, one of, one of the challenges, you know, and again, and I'm, I'm, I'm i- in the middle of it because we got it started. And uh, when Dr. Joel Hunter stepped down from Northland and started the Community Resource Network, um, because we made a great connection with, with his representative, Evan Smith, that's what started to generate all of this and, and move it beyond just what we were doing at our church. Um, I, I, I believe that there was a point, a point in time where the churches would have all probably done that, but, but just like everybody else. COVID is, has, has impacted everybody. And so, so, so the reality is, until we have a spot where they know it's a reality that's gonna happen, uh, it's gonna be hard to get them to put their money uh out. Most of them are trying to survive themselves and taking care of, 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 of the needs that they have within their own congregations, let alone others that come and go. Um, but we do have a, a, a commitment that if we have a center that we get started, there are a number of churches that already said that we will be a part of this. Uh, even First Baptist Church of Sweetwater, which really isn't even a Apopka uh church, but they said, you know what, we love what you're doing, we're close enough, there's people from Apopka that go to us, certainly we'll be a part of it. And so I, I, I know that we can, we can get it up and running, but we just need that place to get it started. And again, uh, if, if the city has a better place to utilize that $150,000 that helps people, uh, you're not gonna find an argument from me. Uh, this isn't, this isn't me trying to, you know, uh, twist an arm. I, I want people to be helped. I just don't know that there's a better investment that you can make right now that will impact the people that, you know, again, there are some that genuinely need it. I just don't think that you've got a better place. You can put it into, you know, sewer systems or whatever you want. Um, uh, and I know that then we're all things that gotta be paid for. I gotta pay for them at my church. Uh, but I try to do as much as I can to help people move forward. Uh, and, and I think that this is an opportunity for the city to say, we want to touch people's lives.
What, which, which building are we talking about on Michael Gladden?
No, it's on Central.
Central, just south of Michael Gladden.
Yeah, it's um, kind of like almost catty corner.
Right, it's across the street, you know, you know where our church is, right? It's across the street.
And Hugh, Hugh, Hughley Village.
Yes.
On the 8th and Central?
No.
Michael Gladden and.
No, no, 10th and Central, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, in the, in, it, it kind of fits, it gets two, two boxes checked. One is, we've got a little bit of right of way around this that we have, that we own, the city owns it. It's, doesn't do anybody any good. And secondly, for me, the reason I thought it was a good location is that it's, it's next to the bus stop, which, so if somebody needs to get a job, but they don't have a car, it's two blocks to walk to the bus sta, you know, the super bus stop there to get them to, if they gotta go to Orlando or to Mount Door or wherever to get their job. You know, from a, from that point of view, it's, it's, it's a, it's a great location. But I, the, the $150,000 would be toward, you know, let the, let the, you know, the, the organization kind of figure out if.
And just so you know, I'm actually not on the foundation board. I purposely stayed off of it because I didn't want this to be about, about myself and our church. Uh, and so, we, we have a very strong board of people that care deeply about this, this place from uh, you know, Rod Love to uh, Tim Clark to, I mean, the board is a, a solid group of guys who really care and gals that really care about uh what happens here. Um, I'm just, I, I, I'm just the spokesperson because I was the one that, you know, uh, actually, my wife started all of this and so, and I've got to uh, uh, make sure that I stay uh in good graces with her, so.
And also, let, let me say, and we talk about taxpayers' dollars, we want to make sure you understand that some of the people that come to, to receive these services are also taxpayers. Uh, some of them have jobs, uh, they may be minimum wage jobs and they can barely make ends meet. So they need additional meal or they need some assistance, some clothing. So, so all these peo, are not just homeless people.
Not just homeless that are.
But, but some of them are individuals that actually have jobs, but just need some assistance to make ends meet.
Correct. And hopefully we give them some resources to get a better job where they don't need the assistance, like, like, you know.
And we got jobs partners that already wants to work with us, but again, we, we weren't organized in a, in a, in a position that we could really tie in to all of these. But if the foundation has a place where this is where we can meet with these people and, and work through these things and it's not a, a church effort, but it's a community effort, that's our goal, is we want this to be a community effort, not, not, not any particular church doing something.
And that's, you know, I wanted to bring that up as well because this isn't going to the church. And I think that's the misnomer, that this is supporting churches and that's kind of mingling funds and people concerned about that. This is something that's dealing with something, we haven't yet seen the effects of what COVID has done fiscally to a lot of our own people. And it's hurting them where the rubber meets the road. And these are people who typically have had jobs in the past. To me, I think it's really gonna fend off some, some issues that could fall upon us as a city and upon the task, taxpayers. It also is going to tend to, rather than being something that accumulates the negative aspect, and I think people see that, it's actually gonna protect us. We've got a lot of development, rather than having tent cities springing up, we're gonna create something that is an avenue to help people get back on their feet, get, get genuine jobs. That's why I was saying, as I've read through this, focusing on the accountability side. You're not simply creating something that will create a bigger problem. It's actually gonna solve a problem. And I, the thing that I do like about it is I do think the churches, as you said, are all kind of doing the same thing. It's like we're all hitting the castle door with a hammer instead of hitting it, you know, together. And I think it will bring others together that'll get involved in this. So it's a whole community thing, not a church thing in that sense.
We, we don't want to duplicate what Hope Center's doing, what, what Bridges Center's doing, what Loaves and Fishes are doing. We don't want to duplicate that. We want to be able to say, when somebody needs food, a family needs food and they qualify for loaves and fishes, we don't want to give them food. We want to say, we've already got a place that does all of that, loaves and fishes. You need to go down there, now there's some requirements. But what happens is they don't take everybody. And when they don't take somebody, there has to be a way to say, okay, that family, let's help them and then let's get them qualified so that they can go to Loaves and Fishes. Let's help them do whatever paperwork needs to be done. Let's help them get their birth certificate. Let's help them get a driver's license because, or at least a state ID if they don't. And that would be what this would do, to make them able to then go get a job and to be able to do the other things that need to be done uh as they go forward.
Yeah, I mean, obviously all of the, the focus is on the details of this thing. I mean, you, again, I. I mean, again, I don't dispute the mission of what's trying to be accomplished here. It's just, you know, if we spend $150,000 or $150,000 on a brick and mortar location and the city owns it, we have risk and liability in that regard. So if you do get critical mass, if you do get an outpouring of people that are seeking these services, and there is a backlog, and you don't have the ability to service every single person, you know, all the details around what happens when you do have people that decide to bring a tent and pitch tent in the parking lot, you know, what happens then? What, you know, is there a payback for the $150,000 original investment because people catch the vision and there's a schedule for us to be paid back the original seed money as a city? You know, all of these details, I want to know. I mean, we're not going to solve it tonight. But obviously, there's people up here that are in support of it. Me, I'm just a little skeptical about just the finer points of the money, knowing that we have all this stuff facing us in the face in terms of scarcity of dollars, right?
Yeah, hey, listen, I understand that. No problem with that there. And if somebody sets up a tent over there, listen, I tell them at my church, if they camp on my front yard, I'll trespass them. You know, I'm here to help, but I'm not here to play games either. And so, you know, we have the city trespass them. I hate to have the police department have to deal with those kind of things. But you know what? If that's the only kind of accountability they understand, sometimes you just have to do that. So I'm a 24-year Marine that, you know, I love people, but, you know, we're not trying to provide an opportunity for people to take advantage of us. We want to get away from that. And that's what's happening right now, is people are just taking advantage of the system.
I don't believe that because I just believe COVID has created some of the problems. I'll tell you the truth, a lot of the problems. Because I've literally stood on different food distribution lines to help families that don't have the transportation to get to it. And I've stood on one line one day for six hours.
Yeah, yeah.
As, you know, just moving along, just trying to get, you know, two boxes of food to take back to them. I've been fortunate that I've called Hope Community when they don't have food distribution. And I have a family that needs food. They meet me there, they give me the food. COVID has a lot of the churches closed down. But I've been fortunate where I can make these phone calls. I just feel like if you have 20, what do you say? You said you have like 24 to 26 churches that want to partner with you in the building, if I remember where it's at, it's a small building. So if you get all these community people and families to come to one place, I don't feel like we're going to really be able to accommodate that.
And again, are you talking about the volunteers or the people that are coming for help?
Just coming for help?
They would come, they would find out. And again, a lot of the work would still be done in the churches. It would be the center point where they would be evaluated, and then they would be able to be told where they can get the assistance that they specifically need. But now you would have that recorded so that you can see who's doing what, rather than them just going church to church to church and nobody really knowing who's doing what.
So you're saying that you already have a plan for the Resource Center?
Yeah, we've got a 26-page document that we presented to the board before people came on to the board.
So I haven't seen that.
Yeah, it really kind of explains a lot of this.
See, I haven't seen that document. So this is why it sounds so foreign to me. I have not seen that document.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yeah, sure. We'll get that. And the other thing that Nicole Kennedy in our office has done over the last three or four months, she's put together a resource booklet. So it lists all the resources that we're providing, either from Apopka churches or Orange County or the state of Florida or even the federal government. So we at least have a, you know, we've got, I know like your church does, Wednesday nights you do laundry. There's, I think, another church, there's two churches do laundry. There's, you know, so you know where, so if somebody were to come to the Resource Center and say, well, yeah, laundry tomorrow night, you know, Pastor Smith's church will be, you know, if you go down to the World of Suds, they'll take care of you. So that's what we're trying to do. And I think one of the biggest things is just giving people IDs to be able to go to work. You can't go to work without an ID. It might not be a driver's license, but if you don't have a state ID,
You're not.
You're not going to get a job, period. And so those are the kind of things that I think this Resource Center could really help us, you know, coordinate. And what, you know, I would like to model it after like what First Presbyterian Church, which is where my mom and dad go, is that they, every Friday, they do a lunch feeding. And they've got five different churches that, every Friday, so they alternate. So it's not on, so my thought is, we get to the point where is that a church would pick up either a day or a week, a month, and they would run the Resource Centers. So we'd have to train those, the people as to what to look for. Mental health, is it IDs? So they would know where to get those resources with the people so that First Baptist would be the first Monday of the month. You know, First Presbyterian would be the second Tuesday of the month. Methodist Church would be the third, you know, Thursday of the month and...
And if Dignity ID was coming, they would go to the Resource Center rather than being somewhere where nobody else knows where they're at. And so we would have them there, and all of the churches would know that that's where Dignity ID is on the third Thursday of the month. And they, so there's just so many things that we could do that would be beneficial. All of the services, all of the questions that you have, the problem with trying to answer those is until we have the facility, the facility is going to drive what services we can have out of it. We do know that regardless of where it is, we're going to have, the idea is to have the caseworkers that can start to put that together for us.
Yeah, I mean, I'll challenge that point a little bit. You know, if, knowing the size of the building that you're targeting, knowing that size, what are the services that you would plan? If it's something smaller, okay, which ones are we going to cut? If it's something bigger, which ones would we introduce? So having that level of, that's what I would want to see. And that's all about the, right? It's, anytime that we make a funding decision, we just have to know what we're actually paying for. So, yeah.
Awesome. Okay. Well, I think we will take maybe a two-minute break here, and we'll be back for 7 o'clock council meeting. Any other questions for Edward or?
No, any further questions? Ed always makes time for me, and I appreciate that.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm available for any questions. If you want to sit down and talk about any of the items or whatever, some new ideas or whatever, absolutely.
Again, my only question is, if we did shift that to free up some more funds, shift that loan to something else, can we get a much lower interest rate?
I took that note, Commissioner, and I'm going to call around and see what that would look like if we were to do something of that nature.
Any last comments, Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Becker? Any other, okay, good. All right, we'll be back 7 o'clock. Thank you, everybody.